Okay. First thing on is I am reporting on the financials from February eighteenth, twenty fifteen, Resolution fifteen oh twenty-one. There was simply a cash transfer of the general fund for a portion of the twenty fifteen core technology funding, which was seventy thousand dollars. And a local match portion of reimbursement number four of the airport FAA grant number three dash three-nine dash zero-zero-five-four dash one-seven-one-four in the amount of nine-hundred-and-fifteen dollars for local match. Any questions, Kevin?
We don't need to vote on that.
That's okay. The Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting of February seventh in twenty fifteen. Commissioner Spudler, yes, yes, yes.
Don't move.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
To these financials and please come out appropriations for the JFS Public Assistance Fund for additional wintry travel expenses for the Water Resources Thompson Water Treatment Project Fund for change order number one and the Engineer's Road and Bridge and Building Fund for appropriate recreational allowances. Cash transfer out of the general fund for portion of two thousand and fifteen funding for CASA, the fourth quarter of gas well allotment proceeds to the Board of VD, fourth quarter interest transfers, and a local match portion for the ODOT grant project, fourteen oh three for the airport. Purchase order for Babel to US GMC Truck for the state bid purchase of three GMC twenty-five-hundred HP four-wheel drive replacement truck with clouds for Department of Water Resourcing in the amount of ninety-seven thousand three hundred and eighty-two fifty. Travel request for the Department of Javon Family Services and Transit Department. Payment to Zestive Incorporated for revolving loan disbursement number three for the Office of Community and Economic Development in the amount of twelve thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty cents. Payments to URS Corporation for pay requests, seven, eight, and nine for the Water Resource Thompson Leaks Water Treatment Project in forty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-one cents.
Don't move.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Thank you.
Jessica, you want to come up? So you're hiding back there behind the jug?
Good morning.
You are morning.
Okay. So we finally got the agreement back from Lee Patterson's attorney to move forward with the seniors.
Commissioner Scottman?
Want to read it or?
The Department of Aging has requesting the board approve and execute the sublease between Patterson Farms and the Jugg County Department of Aging for lease space for the West Jugg Senior Center for the period February first, two thousand fifteen through January thirty-first, two thousand sixteen in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars per month plus a portion of the building electric.
Don't move.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
I'm going to stay warm.
Yeah, you too.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, Joni, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I see you're wearing your coat inside, or is that just the second coat? You have one that goes over. Oh, I thought you might have one that went over that.
I never wear a coat.
Do you want to tell us what's going on?
Okay. As Commissioners know, you were awarded an allocation grant for some work on the Thompson Township Community Center. And the first item is that I mean, I think you were awarded contract to Stephen Cicerio, the architect who's going to come up with the plans for the ADA exterior ramp, a new furnace, hot water tank, and two ADA bathrooms at the Thompson Township Community Center.
And there's three items on here, so can we do it at the same time?
One is the award, one is the contract, and one is the.
So we'll do five, six, and seven together? Okay. Five and seven are yours, the stairs are just you, the stairs are all three of you for the next ten items, or nine items. This whole site is just you, this is all three of you, and this is the next nine items. So it's five, six, and seven. The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the notice of award to Stephen Cicerio, AIA Architect for the creation of architectural plans for the rehabilitation of the Thompson Township Community Center, including ADA ramp, new furnace, hot water tank, two ADA bathrooms, and foundation repair under allocation grant BW fourteen-one-eight-one in the amount of seven thousand nine hundred dollars. The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting board approve and execute the agreement between the Jugg County Board of Commissioners and Stephen Cicerio, AIA Architect for professional services to Jugg County for the Thompson Township Community Center interior renovation, foundation repair, and exterior ramp under grant number BW fourteen-one-eight-one in the amount of seven thousand nine hundred dollars. The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the notice to proceed to Stephen Cicerio, AIA Architect for the creation of architectural plans for the rehabilitation of the Thompson Township Community Center, including ADA ramp, new furnace, hot water tank, two ADA bathrooms, and foundation repair under allocation grant BW fourteen-one-eight-one in the amount of seven thousand nine hundred dollars.
Anyone?
Hmm? Don't move down those three.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Um.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool? Did she talk about all three specials?
Yep.
Okay. I was trying to show.
On that five, six, and seven, we only sign.
You only sign the agreement.
The six, number six. Ralph and I signed number six.
Correct. You signed number nine, and you signed number twelve. All the rest of them are the President.
President, right, that's right.
Okay. For items eight, nine, and ten, again, the notice of award, the signing of the contract and the notice to proceed to Stephen Cicerio. This is for the remainder of the interior renovation at the Thompson Township Community Center. So this will be all only windows and doors, insulation, new drywall. They're going to repair or reconstruct the staircase to the second floor to make it within code. And then all the fires, the exits signed, and everything to do with the fire. Not, not, it's very complex.
How much time is this going to take?
Well, items five, six, and seven, that all is going to be done before December thirty-first. Numbers eight, nine, and ten may take a little bit longer.
Correct. So it's going to take a year to do?
Well, you have to take into consideration all the time that's lost in the building process and getting ready, you know, for the wood to actually start.
So we're going to be spending this twenty-one thousand dollars until next year, probably?
No, no. The plans will be done for April. By April. This is, what we're working with now are just the architect and the engineer coming up with the plans. And then after they give me the plans, then we have to start the bidding.
Oh, I see. But yeah, the project will be done sometime toward the end.
Five, six, and seven, the work that's under five, six, and seven has to be done before December thirty-first.
You mentioned the stairs, the second level. If you look in the window out there, you can see some of this stuff is pretty bad. But that will not be ADA compliant, right? On the second floor?
No.
It's just so that.
And it's not required to be because they're using the second floor mostly for storage.
Right. I mean, it's not open, a public area. But the stairs have to be rebuilt or you get a ladder.
Well, yeah, the stairs are not even.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I mean, they're.
They still have to do it so that there's proper access to it.
Right, okay. Just wanted to clear.
Whether it's a maintenance person or, you know, whatever.
So Joni, I apologize. So are we putting the cart behind the horse a little bit? Does the architectural eight, nine, and ten need to be done before five, six, and seven?
They're both the same, but they're just for different parts of the building. They're both architectural plans. They're, because they're out of different, the allocation grant is paying for five, six, and seven. So it had to be, it had to be separated out of.
Oh, I see. I got you, okay.
So that's why we have two contracts for Cicerio.
It's a little confusing.
Okay. Did we? No, I'm getting ready if I'm talking right. Eight, eight, nine, and ten, I moved on those three. Do we read them? You're going to read them?
I only read five.
I thought she read them. She told me all about them. Go ahead. Unless I read them, go ahead and read them.
I cannot read them if you wouldn't.
Oh, you don't know?
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the notice of award to Stephen Cicerio, AIA Architect for the creation of architectural plans for the interior rehabilitation of the Thompson Township Community Center under Program Income Waiver Fund in the amount of twenty-one thousand six hundred dollars. The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and execute the agreement between the Jugg County Board of Commissioners and Stephen Cicerio, AIA Architect for professional services to Jugg County for the Thompson Township Community Center interior renovation under Program Income Waiver Fund in the amount of twenty-one thousand six hundred dollars. The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the notice to proceed to Stephen Cicerio, AIA Architect for the creation of architectural plans for the interior rehabilitation of the Thompson Township Community Center under Program Income Waiver Fund in the amount of twenty-one thousand six hundred dollars.
Don't move.
Second.
All three.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Mr. Claypool?
Now we've got to find out which one's what happened. Which one's Lucas fellow?
Okay. Now we're going to do the engineering after we've done the.
We've done the structural. So item eleven, twelve, and thirteen have to do with the new parking lot that will be installed in the front of the Thompson Township Community Center. So these are, this is an engineering contract.
The Office of Community and Economic Development. The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the notice of award to Smollett Engineering Limited for Foundation Inspection Report and Creation of Engineering Plans for the Thompson Township Community Center Parking Lot under Program Income Waiver Fund in the amount of four thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and execute the agreement between the Jugg County Board of Commissioners and Smollett Engineering Limited for the professional services to Jugg County for the Thompson Township Community Center Parking Lot under Program Income Waiver Fund in the amount of four thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars twenty-five cents. The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the notice to proceed to Smollett Engineering Limited for Foundation Inspection Report and Creation of Engineering Plans for the Thompson Township Community Center Parking Lot under Program Income Waiver Fund in the amount of four thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-five cents.
Make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Joni, what's the total on all those? I mean, I'm trying to do it here longhand and I.
About thirty-two thousand more.
Yeah.
Ish.
Hmm?
Ish.
Yeah, no, well, thirty-three, I don't know, by thirty-four or something like that. I didn't leave myself enough paper here to carry the thing and move the off. The decimal. Should've started on the back and I'd add a lot of paper. So the entire project you hope to have done by the end of this year?
The furnace, the exterior ramp, the two ADA bathrooms, those, those projects will be done, they have to be done by December thirty-first. The remainder of the work, I'm going to try and have it done by December thirty-first. We run over a few weeks.
See, they built a whole Eaton Center a year. Was an easier job. Put in the news government fund.
Where's, where's the parking lot going to be on the east side of the building?
Yeah, there's a parking lot there now that's sort of been cherry-rigged over the years, you know, so we're going to pull it out. And then the architect and the engineer will coordinate so that the ramp that's coming onto the south side of the building pours into the parking lot properly. You know, there's some drainage issues and they'll coordinate them.
Now that, when the bathrooms in, that includes hooking up to the sewer line, or do they bring the sewer line over to it or?
The sewer line is a separate issue that will be covered under the second part of the contract. So, yeah, they have to, they have to tie in for the bathrooms and the kitchen.
Thank you.
But the township may, still negotiating, the township may take care of digging the trench to get that town. Let them fight with the law.
Okay, you got one more?
No, sir.
Anita, Anita.
You guys are actually tagging me.
I'm like, I'm going to take mine.
Thank you, Joni.
Thank God for Joni. All right. While you're signing, I'll explain this one then. This is, we're just being preemptive on this. I don't have a project yet. I have enough to start a notification process. Oh, and the name might be deceiving, it has nothing to do with Heritage House. It's nothing, that's all I want to do with it. This is just a business that is looking at a spot in Chardon, and I need to begin a notification process. And if I start today, they can dig dirt by April first. And if the longer I postpone, the longer that date moves forward. So without an application, I'm going to notify the state, which is what I'm asking the Commissioners permission to put an ad in the paper to begin that notification process. And of course, there's like about six more steps once it becomes a project, so you'll be fully informed over several meetings of what the project is.
I love your optimism that they'll be able to dig on April first.
Of this year or from five years ago?
No.
It's only like thirty.
Well, I just don't want to be, as I always say, government is holding up my project. So what we're trying to do is make sure we're doing everything we can in advance to pave the road or plow the road.
At one point in time do we start talking about dollar amounts?
I put it in at five hundred because that's the max we can do, and it's probably going to be within that range, four to five. The whole project's going to be multi-million. But the most we could do is that. So I'm just going to cover ourselves so I don't have to come back and do an amendment or something. We're just going to put the all in. I know, you're going to have issues on it. But, you know, this is non-binding. This is just a notification.
Okay. Want to read it?
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board grant permission to advertise the notice to the public of a finding of no significant impact on the environment, Fonzie, and notice of intent to request a release of funds. NOI RROF combined notice in regards to the community development block grant revolving loan fund loan to Chardon House LLC to be advertised on February twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen.
Don't move.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
As it progresses, I'll fill you in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm looking forward to it, too, Anita.
Okay. You'll read it first.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First off, I would like to thank each Commissioner who separately and individually were part of the process of interviewing. We appreciate your time on that. You've given the best feedback we've got applications for. And doing this for memory, I'm going to bring my, your resume by me. You've worked for Burton Healthcare. You're the volunteer fire chief for North Bloomfield.
Yes.
And you're basically the fire chief for the General Motors Plan. You've got quite a portfolio, wasn't you? You've got vast knowledge in public safety and training. You've got other brochures and newsletters and things else you want to do.
Just a lot of publishing experience, public speaking experience, and emergency response plan.
Good, welcome.
The Department of Emergency Services is requesting the board approve hiring Roger Peterson to the position of Deputy Director planning to be effective March sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen at a rate of nineteen dollars, ten cents per hour. After the successful completion of a one-hundred-and-eighty-day probationary period, the rate will increase to twenty dollars, eleven cents per hour.
Don't move.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Morning, guys.
Morning, Sharon. And ma'am? This is our final step in preparation for bidding the three federally projects, Old State, Chugrin Road, and Ravenna Road. And today we're requesting permission to advertise for bids beginning this Thursday for three consecutive weeks. And we will then open the bids on March twenty-first.
Would it make sense to combine one of these?
Mm-hmm. The County Engineers' Office is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for bids for the asphalt resurfacing of Old State Road, CH six, section B through D in the middle form of Parkland Townships to be held on Wednesday, March twenty-fifth, two thousand and fifteen at two o'clock PM. Notice of this bid opening will be advertised on February twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen, March fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, March twelfth, two thousand and fifteen, and on the county website. The County Engineers' Office is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for bids for the asphalt resurfacing of Chugrin Road, CH nine, section C through D in Bay Ridge Township to be held on Wednesday, March twenty-fifth, two thousand and fifteen at two oh five PM. Notice of this bid opening will be advertised on February twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen, March fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, March twelfth, two thousand and fifteen, and on the county website. The County Engineers' Office is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for bids for widening the asphalt resurfacing of Ravenna Road, CH six oh one, section B through D in Chardon Township to be held on Wednesday, March twenty-fifth, two thousand and fifteen at two ten PM. Notice of this bid opening will be advertised on February twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen, March fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, March twelfth, two thousand and fifteen, and on the county website.
Make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Hello, Michael.
Good morning, good morning, good morning.
Morning, Michael.
Good morning. Okay, we're looking at numbers nineteen and twenty. At least they're hiring two part-time drivers. That will put us right back to where our plan was before we requested to hire a couple more. Right back to the status quo. Probably a couple more, maybe two more part-time hires. We have flexibility to probably control costs and reduce costs along with the country side.
The Transit Department is requesting the board approve hiring William Bevan to the position of part-time driver number twenty-two-ten-one to be effective March second, two thousand and fifteen at a rate of twelve dollars sixty-four cents per hour. After the successful completion of a one-thousand-hour probationary period, the rate will increase to thirteen dollars thirty cents per hour. The Transit Department is requesting the board approve hiring David Trask to the position of part-time driver number twenty-two-ten-one to be effective March second, two thousand and fifteen at a rate of twelve dollars sixty-four cents per hour. After the successful completion of a one-thousand-hour probationary period, the rate will increase to thirteen dollars thirty cents per hour.
Make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Mr. Claypool?
Aye.
You have a question for you that you may not be able to answer, but if you figure that a average work year is two thousand hours, they got to go a thousand hours, so.
Takes about a year for those guys to get out of probation. Because we gauge our budget on a thousand hours. Okay, so it takes about a year total. This year we have a couple now, we have one now that will gain a little bit faster because we don't have the payments as far out anymore. But once we get these two on, hopefully another one soon, I'll be able to reduce those hours. And also probably reduce some of my full-time hours to make some flexibility.
Thank you. Maybe you want to mention your advertising?
Yeah, we do have an advertising thing going on. Right now we do have, it looks like we have on board an advertiser on the buses anywhere from, we don't have anybody who wants a full wrap on a bus, you know, like we see on cars and stuff like that. There's some folks that are, either way, an advertiser on the side of a couple of our buses. We have UH, we're negotiating with them right now. Possibly they'll, they're wanting to advertise on every bus that we have, which would be great. Waste management, same thing. We also have a couple of local folks that have expressed a smaller place that have expressed some interest. So we're in the JFS, I think he wants to do something, AG has asked me today for the information. So it's going slowly, but, you know, let's slow, slow but steady. Build a base of funds on a continuing basis to connect the Transit Department. So we can continue to have some, I talked a lot about operational flexibility, so it is from there.
Are there any rules, regulations, prohibitions as far as advertising on those buses? I mean, I know on school buses, they talked about this years ago, that they could put some, you know, Joe's Bookstore or something on the side of the school bus. And the law prohibits them from doing anything on those yellow buses that, that would be, you know, isn't prescribed in, in the law with.
The guideline from the state is that there should be nothing, what they would deem controversial.
That's it?
I know, that sounds funny to say that, but, so obviously, so I use the, excuse my bartender approach, you know, talk about sex, religion, politics.
Right.
Aside from our buses, if you want to talk about, we can provide this service or call this number for us to, you know, Mike's plumbing, and we'll clean out your drains, that's great.
And you could put a full wrap on and then put the lettering for Jugga Transit and so on over the top of that?
All the planning we do has to be able to see the phone number at least on the front and on both sides of the bus, and towards Jugg County Transit somewhere in that vehicle, depending on the type. Right now we just have some windows, so. But as mentioned, they saw a few buses with the sides that were plain. I took those lettering off, but we have two more we need to. ours we didn't letter, and I took the lettering off in anticipation of having some signage on there, so.
So how much of the advertising fee gets sucked under Columbus?
That's all local, right? Just keep it quiet. Keep it quiet.
Really, it's a suggestion, that's what they're suggesting, because many transit, rural transit departments around the state are in the same boat. And in fact, Dave was there when the person was auditing my budget for next year, I asked the state to come and take a look at my budget, make sure it was above board square and all that good stuff. She suggested, and I never really thought about going out and getting it, and I contacted four or five different transit departments around this region, Columbus and Kentucky, Indiana. They said it was a relatively successful forum, but none of it's all local cash, a lot of that has to go to, back to Columbus. The good thing is I can, I can use that to leverage getting more money from Columbus, so.
Well, you, you've been in this job now for just about a year, I think you've done a really good job.
Oh, thanks. I will tell. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, next item up was discussion of the law library, we've got an outstanding position to fill, I don't know what your feelings on this are, I interviewed most of the folks, talked to them, talked to Jim Blase, talked to judges, talked to a number of people of office, and I think I'm ready to make a recommendation, but I thought I'd run that by you guys and see what your thoughts on that.
Go ahead and make a recommendation.
Based on all the folks that I've talked to, Catherine Gillette, who I think was one of the last resumes that was submitted, appeared to have the best qualifications, experience, and, and doesn't come with some of the political baggage that some have, and so that would be the person, my first choice.
So are you making a motion for that?
I'm throwing it on the table for discussion, if you wanna consider a motion, I suppose we could do that, but I just wanna force my choice down anybody's throat, I'm throwing it on the table for discussion.
Well, I looked at the people as well, I have no problem with that, that name, so I'll move.
Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Stedler?
Aye.
Mr. Claypool?
Aye.
Okay, that one's off our docket.
Just to clarify, that term is a five-year term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen.
Making slow progress.
It's also a non-paid position, correct?
Correct.
Non-paid position. Acknowledgements, weekly reports filed by the dog warden, and upcoming meetings on the twenty-sixth, we're gonna hold a regular session at six thirty, that's this Thursday. We have, there is a NAWACA meeting of the Governance Committee, the Finance Committee, the Executive Committee on Friday, the Board of Revisions at the Auditers' Office on March second, March third, we're gonna hold regular session, March tenth, Tax and incentive review council, community development. On the tenth, Community Investment Council, on the tenth, we hold regular session at nine, and that's gonna include a Business Resource Network update by Brenda Vogli and Dennis Tamasik. Denise, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I don't have my glasses on. On the tenth, what, tenth, can you visit again? Planning Commission meeting at seven. On the twelfth, Youth Leadership Day. On the thirteenth, NAWACA Board of Directors meeting, those are NAWACA guys, can you visit? On the sixteenth, Family First. The seventeenth, Commissioners hold regular session. On the twentieth, NAWACA again, as in air quality, transportation, and water quality.
One more thing, again, as far as for NAWACA, I've just been kinda looking at my options as far as alternate, and I wanna make a motion for Joe Cattell to be put in for my alternate for Friday. For this, for this Friday, on the...
February twenty-seventh.
You're moving, I'll second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Stedler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Okay.
Question?
Question? I know you've...
I'm sorry, go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, thank you. Diane Jones, wanna commend the commissioners for previous meetings, when the microphone was here at the front, made hearing, even here in the first row, quite acceptable. It was very difficult to hear this morning, and I'd like to request...
It's on, well, we could've moved it.
Oh, really, it was on?
It's on, I turned it on this morning, I turned it up, but it just wasn't where it was.
Just maybe some...
You didn't hear a mic at all?
No, no, it really, it was really...
Thank you for that, I didn't know we had the mic up there, so I didn't, I, from here, I can't see it, but it's there. I'll tell you what, we'll try to...
Down there.
We're, we're looking at, I'm getting pricing on a more permanent solution, where they would each have a microphone, we have a microphone for the person sitting at the guest table, and a couple speakers that we're gonna put in the ceiling house, look at that.
Awesome.
We got a quote from somebody committee outside of like fifteen thousand dollars. Now, I got a quote, just piece by parts, it was about thirteen hundred dollars. If you remind me...
Yeah.
If you ever remind me, I'll go get a block of wood at home, and I'll drill a hole in it, and we'll set that attractive block of wood on the table with the microphone on end in the block of wood, and try that, and that, I'll only charge... Oh, this one, oh, you... Yeah, I won't charge much at all. For a four-by-four block of wood with a hole in it, I'll, I'll...
That might be a real inducement for better attendance, you know?
It's on, okay, yeah. The problem is, it lays flat, you can't...
You'd read barry, so, and there was a lot of feedback, so I tried it down there, so now it's off.
I just need to measure the size of that handle and just get a block, just get a block of wood or a hole in it, get it in there. For the time being, yeah, but we're gonna go for something.
That, that would be awesome, you know, it's no problem hearing three commissioners or Mr. Stedler.
Right, yeah.
But the...
No, you're, you're right, I've sat out there, and you can't hear the people, and, and it's frustrating.
It's very frustrating, yeah, even for those of us who are very committed. Thank you.
Well, some of us are deaf.